Today, this is the City of Harvey Council meeting. Day one of January twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five. The time is seven fifteen P M. No problems in this morning. And I have the roll call. All of the members of the council, please check yourselves in. We have a horn. Next on our agenda is the dedication and pledge of allegiance. Esther Harrison, if you would be so kind as to leave us.
Let us look to our Father. We thank you. We praise you and God. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. Your love and kindness, Father. We thank you for allowing us to lead one year into another year. We thank you for the blessings that you have extorted from us. We also send up a prayer, Father, for those who have lost their lives and losing their homes tragically in the state of California. Please bless them, cover them, and extinguish that situation. Father, we thank you for what you're doing in Harvey. We thank you for what you're doing for us, even through this administration, through every leader, Father, through every alderperson, Father. We thank you. And thank you for the mayor, Father. We pray that you will bless us and bless your night. That let us have a unified meeting. We'll give you the glory and the honor for the bones from you. And Jesus, thank you, Father.
Amen.
A pledge with your citizens of the United States of America. So the republic, for which we stand, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I want to make sure that this presentation is a meaningful presentation. Next slide is automatic reports. We'd like to limit those reports to three minutes. The chair will start by roughly recognizing the second ward.
I mean, New Year's Day in Harvey, first I go to a Santa Hartville. Thank you to the five hundred and thirty second residents who came out to support the centering of the given event that was sponsored by Infineon Hens Chair of the District Two O Five in our second ward office. I want to take a moment to congratulate my stewardess, Dr. Keisha McCaskill, on her appointment as the new fifth district commissioner of the county. I'm very excited for her leadership and dedication to the community across the fifth district. I want to send a special thank you to the Harvey Fire Department, who raised two fires on Friday, January tenth, on the hundred and fifty second block of Loomis and Lexington. We really appreciate it, and I'm grateful for your self-respect. As members of the, as a member of the Public Safety Committee, I would like to take this as an opportunity to bring about concern regarding abandoned homes. In the second ward alone, there are currently a hundred properties left open, and this poses a serious safety risk to our residents. I mean, steadfast action in one of these homes can be properly boarded up to prevent squatting and any additional hazards that could be a threat or harm to residents or the city. Next, I want to address something on your recent work bill. Some of you saw that it was stated that I voted on Thursday, December the twelfth, for that legislation. However, I was absent. I did follow up with the clerk's office. I believe that was an error sent out over the half of the mayor's office. But I just wanted to ensure transparency and correct any misunderstandings. On a separate note, I've also been advocating since May eighth for my automatic reimbursement, of which I received zero dollars. So where about nineteen thousand dollars has been approved on Monday, June tenth? Mayor Clark, I sent you five separate emails, with the latest being this past January the sixth. And to no avail, I heard nothing back. This is affixating, the second ward, because everything that's going on that you've seen in the second ward of the City of Harvey is being financed strictly out of my pocket and out of my budget. And I feel that it's equitable when wards one and six have received automatic reimbursement and ward four received a partial reimbursement. I'd like to also address the false allegations that were made against me stemming from the incident on Wednesday, August the fourteenth. I'd like to conclude that as of Monday, December the twenty third, all charges were dismissed. Today is a very special day for my stewardess, Delta Sigma Theta, celebrating the hundred and twelve years of sponsorship, stewardess service, and social action. I'm very hopeful for a new way to usher in a genesis, a beginning of a language we can be a collaborative entity for the residents of the City of Harvey in the second ward. Thank you.
And next is the honorable, the third ward.
Happy New Year, everyone. I want to thank the, I want to thank the street department. You guys have been really doing well with this, making sure the streets are together, shoveling right away when you got, you know, taking care of the, making lots of the best that you can. I do know it's, can be a little difficult at times, you know, as you all know, I'm the only person that tries to look for money. When I say he had no money. So I don't know if you guys got your citizen newspaper? And I noticed in there, let me talk about the properties.
Hold on, hold on, excuse me. The time wasn't moving, so it wouldn't be fair. Okay.
Okay. One of the businesses I noticed was Bonnie Bunny Logistics, one forty-five hundred, actually. A lot of money that they own, a lot of properties actually that pay money. Also, I find, there was a article as of January fifteenth, four hundred and sixty-five commercial properties in Harvey were delinquent on their twenty twenty-one property count. This translates roughly to twelve million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars in debt. That's a lot we could do with that money. So when we have businesses who are suing us or don't want to pay, I guess, help me understand why some stuff makes sense. If I was renting a home to you and you were paying me rent every month faithfully, and I haven't been paying mortgage on my house. The merchant company's gonna come and pick you. They don't care if you've been paying. They're going to come and pick you, because you're just a business. Although Illinois Republicans propose a bill to aim to reduce the state's second of the nation's property taxes, arguing high taxes create opportunity deserts in minority communities and hinder development growth. We have the abandoned houses that we have, and they're not the only ones. The business is not the only one. There's some abandoned properties. Everyone thinks it's just easier to get those properties and turn it down to what we need. We have, that cost is very costly. So maybe if we had some of our ones that businesses should pay, we could probably do some things about those abandoned houses or start collecting or to fix streets, set off that some of us have complained about. Thank you, Mr. C. At least, and then you did see how it works out. I think the fourth one's really great. I was gonna speak down here for a little while, but I'll tell you on your ticket that I'm gonna try it out. But we're not where we want to be, but we're not where we should be right at this moment, but we're not where we used to be. And I'll see how we like. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, recognize the sixth ward.
Thank you. Good residents of Harvey, the great sixth ward. I am excited to share the recent turkey and ham giveaway for Thanksgiving, as well as the toy and bike giveaway at Bryan Elementary School. We were resoundly successful, thanks to the generosity and the contributions and hard work of everyone involved. We were able to distribute over fifty brand-new bicycles, twenty police stations, and Xbox consoles, and thousands of other gifts to our children and our community. It was truly heartwarming to see so many smiling faces and families coming together to celebrate the holiday season. I am incredibly proud of the turnout and the positive impact these efforts had on our community. And for a moment like these, that reminds me of the strength and the unity that we share here in the City of Harvey. I would also like to extend my deepest gratitude to the City of Harvey Street Department for their tireless work in keeping on every claim throughout the holiday season. There was dedication. It was dictated, ensured that our events ran smoothly and our city looked beautiful for all the residents and guests. Additionally, I would like to thank the mayor's administration for joining, joining their support and partnership in making these initiatives possible. Your collaboration helps us create meaningful experiences for our families, and I am grateful for that. And as we look forward to two thousand twenty-five, I want to take a moment to wish all of you a prosperous, fruitful new year, and may we be filled with health, happiness, and continued progress to our great city. And thank you for your support. God bless each and every one of you from the great sixth ward. I'd like to take one moment. I had an honor today. One of my residents, some of you may know her, is a longtime resident. Her name is Dolores Bosetta Harris. This young lady was the first female, that not African-American, Black or white. She was the first female to drive a truck here in the City of Harvey for the street department. And the day was going home, celebrating, and I had the honor to be there with her family and give a resolution on behalf of the great City of Harvey. And I want to share that with you all. Now, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Our thank you was just a little friendly, and we thank you very much for your comments. Finally, we have the chair, we advise the honourable of the first ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me? Okay, I'm here. Through the month of the seventh, I'm working. I still have, like, a Mac in here just in the last night. So, oh, I'm working. With that being said, I want to say thank you to our residents who came out to the first ward event. We had our holiday bingo, and that was a huge success. We had kids, seniors, people of all ages. But we worked that really well. This was the first time I want to thank Joe Whittington and his team for coming out. They did a tremendous job. Oh, we too, at the first ward, had our Thanksgiving turkey giveaway. I partnered up with Will Davis, and we were able to give out a hundred turkeys. So this holiday season was a huge success. But as we go into two thousand twenty-five, and that seems like a blink of an eye, we're gonna be at two thousand twenty-six. Let's be mindful of each other. Right now, we're in horrific weather. It's extremely cold. If you need a warning center, please call. If you need anything, you know, call on your neighbors, check on them with the powder going out. If you have extra blankets, just let's take care of one another, because we are a part of one another's life here in the city. And also, as Alderman Chapman said, and Alderman Smith said about the abandoned homes, yes, we do have a lot of abandoned homes. It's a work in progress. And I'm not putting a bandaid on it. I'm not saying an excuse. The street department has done a tremendous job. The ironic behavior, though, is once the item gets built up, boarded up, secured, the next night, it's pulled down with that. So if you see something, please say something. In the first ward this week, we had an incident, and it was quite alarming. They got, knowing got hurt. But it brought a lot of different agencies into the first ward. And I'm really impressed with the way everyone was communicating with all these different agencies and with each other in sharing information. So I'm gonna ask you to do the same. Share information. If you see something, say something. Remember, we're all of us together, and God bless them. Happy New Year.
Thank you. We appreciate the comments from our council members. Next on our agenda is public comment. Public comment is encouraged. Appreciate, this is the only opportunity for the public to address the city council or agenda items and any other cities related to business. In order to accomplish all business on the agenda, and be respectful of everyone's time, council members will not engage in dialogue with individual members of the audience. No immediate action will be taken on any public comment issue. Excuse me. No speaker made. Donate is on her. Time for another speaker. Comments shall be courteous and respectful at all times. No person may use public comments for the purpose of campaigning or advertisement. This is not a question and answer time. The council cannot engage in conversation with the public. Questions and concerns about operations should be addressed by city staff during regular business hours. We would ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Excuse me. I am going to read a name followed by another name. We would like for that person following, for instance, our first public comment is Glennis James Watson. We would like for Glennis James Watson to step up to the podium to be heard. She will be followed by Ryan Sinewelski. We ask that Mr. Sinewelski be ready and available to speak when this Watson is complete. And then I will say who is going to be the following. Excuse me. Commenter after that, so we'll know that everybody will be ready for the sake of time.
Good evening. My name is Dolores James Watson.
No, good afternoon.
Yeah, it sounds like the mic's not on either. It's so really quiet. Oh, that sounds better.
So it's Glennis James Watson, followed by Ryan Sinewelski. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Glennis James Watson. And despite the presence of the Harvey Stafford, and the number of people who are a member of the community evening, and the explicit revocation of my First Amendment rights, I am actually a resident of the United States. After November, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four meeting of this Harvey City Council, I was escorted out of the meeting for allegedly disrupting the meeting. My subsequent appearance at the Harvey's camera room court resulted in a finding against me of liable for disorderly conduct and a fine of five hundred dollars. Mayor Clark, Chief Biddings, Deputy Chief Anderson, City Attorney, all persons, and the men and women of department chairs of the city, you need to be ashamed of yourselves. The fact that you would actively work to suppress the voice of the people of Harvey is despicable. And for what? A paycheck. Whether by commission or omission, you are complicit in denying a whole community their right to free speech. That quasi-legal notice that the police department reads at the beginning of each meeting is made up of ordinance, statutes, and code pieced together to make it sound legitimate. I'm sure legal counsel advised you not to post it on the city website, Facebook page, or anywhere else outside, anywhere else, eyes outside of Harvey can get a look at it. And to the audience members, if you're ever here in the city hall for anything other than a council meeting, you'll notice that that legal notice is conspicuously absent from the glass panel. Not to worry, however, I'm going to post it everywhere I can. And I had this shirt made, and I'm going to wear it everywhere that I go. To the grocery store, to work, to church. If I had a dog, I'd wear it along the dog. I'm going to wear it as many places that I'm able, and hopefully conversation will be made, so that I can explain to anybody who's willing to talk about it, the oppression that we experience here in Harvey. I own the rights to this design, so I can make shirts, bags, bumper stickers, car magnets, church fans, hats, anything that I rather can be affixed to, it can be made. So if anyone's interested in having something made, let me know, because, understand, once we cross that threshold to this, to this room, our rights to free speech are rescinded. So just think of what a follow-up would be at the next meeting of the city council. The chamber is full of people wearing this design. That isn't blessed, of course. Legal notice is amended to him to wear it in peril.
Next is Ryan Sinewelski, followed by Ms. Zerker Verden.
Good evening, everyone. I don't know what the, I don't think this is working, by the way. You want to try to turn it on her? No? Because I couldn't hear her barely at all in the back. Yeah, I'm gonna redeem my time. Okay, how's that? Oh, that's much better. Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is Ryan with the Harvey Historical Society. We've had a scary start to this new year in Harvey. There is no leadership from the city government. A man was killed near Hundred Fifty-seventh and Paulina, but we'd never know if he didn't hear it from a neighbor. Harvey Police don't tell us anything about crime. Add it to the pile of yet unsolved Harvey murders and other crimes from two thousand twenty-four. Mayor Clark and the four alderguests men can't even solve a single crime in the City of Harvey. Maybe that's why they posted that staged arrest, quote-unquote, of the Park Forest murderer. Funny how Park Forest Police just happened to be nearby, and everything was on video. It was timed like a TV show. Did Harvey capture the people who held up the mail carrier by Lord of Mercy Church and Alderman Drubisky's home? Nope, that was the federal postal police. But Harvey sure did try to claim credit for it in that press release. There's one thing Clark makes sure Harvey Police do. They're great at harassing law-abiding citizens. Just ask my neighbor Glennis. Harvey Police took her out of the meeting and fined her five hundred dollars for saying something quietly to herself. Alderghestman, how dare you keep voting to support this dictator? You're the one that's, that's supporting this whole regime. Just this past week alone, there were three more fires in Harvey. The fire chief never has any answers for why these fires keep happening. It's scary as a resident here, and it's infuriating. If Mayor Clark and the four alderguests men kept their campaign promises, they would immediately board up and list for sale all these empty buildings that are many wished by the city. They would make sure that Harvey residents got priority in buying and fixing up all these empty properties. Why do you keep all these empty properties looking so horrible? Do something about it. If you're wondering why Mayor Clark isn't doing much to help Harvey, maybe it's because he's making more than ninety thousand dollars a year as the FOIA and Ethics Officer in Calumet City. That's right, the man who kicks out elderly black widows from their home so he can build a park is the Ethics Officer in Calumet City. Mayor Clark needs to get fired from that job and start doing his job as the mayor of this city. I just had a prostitute proposition me in Tyrone Rogers Ward the other night on Halsted. The whole area looks horrible. We have homeless people, those with addictions, and lost dogs wandering our streets in the cold. Meanwhile, Mayor Clark is cozy at his home on the north side of Chicago, sending Harvey Police to ticket and harass Harvey residents and businesses so he can get more money to fund his lavish lifestyle. I'm calling on all Harvey residents to speak out and come to city meetings. This is your city. You pay taxes here. If not, Mayor Clark will try to come for your home and your business next. No one is safe from this nightmare. We are the taxpayers and residents. We deserve better. You deserve better, Harvey.
Next is Ms. Zerker Verden, followed by Jill Lewis.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ms. Zerker. I'm a trustee of the Harvey Club of Blackberry, and I'd just like to point some of my concerns to your, uh, over the city's website posted methods. And the years twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five are not listed. That's three years not listed on the website. Thirty-six months, three years. Okay. And after going over all of the information, as I said in the last meeting that we had, there's that there was an increase. There was a four point nine nine percent increase, which is not required by the city to ask the residents' approval to do it, which is provided by the county, by the state. You could just do it. It's kind of like a cost of living increase. So my hope is this, don't say that you did increase the taxes, okay? Say that you did, you took the minimum four point nine nine, which is allowed by the county and by the state without authorization from the residents, and just say it like it is, because it makes the city look bad when you put out bad information like that, when you're trying to fool people. Eventually, they're gonna find out what's going on. So I advise all of you all, go to the website, take a look for yourself. And they did take a four point nine nine percent increase. If they didn't post it, post it for twenty-two, twenty-three. Post it for twenty-three, twenty-four. Post it for twenty-four, twenty-five. Post it and make me out of the line. My other concern is, what happened to Glennis? I, I, I am valid. On December the twelfth, that was a Thursday, we had a meeting, and a guy by the name of James retired. God bless you, James, for your service to the City of Harvey. And I don't know how you made it through, but God bless you, and I hope you have a good retirement. Everybody started clapping. City employees, some of the aldermen, the audience. I thought you said nobody was supposed to clap. We're supposed to stay quiet. We were not supposed to clap, not make comments, not make sounds. Ask was reiterated by the chief of police. He made his speech. When we came in here today about what we're supposed to do and not do, you can't have it both ways. You can't have it both ways. And that's, and, and what you get, Glennis, is wrong. It's totally wrong, a five hundred dollar fine. And is the person who is playing judge, is he really a judge? Is he an active judge? Is he a retired judge? Is what you guys are doing, is it really legal?
Thank you. Next is Shakira Lewis, followed by Tiara Greer.
Oh, she got it. Redeem your time.
Could you, could you tell me what you thought about? Good evening. Okay. All right. Good evening, Harvey, Happy New Year. Oh, yeah, I got to give my band.
And when I started the time, we didn't ask you to sit there and dance with the microphone. The microphone was working.
No, it wasn't.
It's not just firing.
I know, it's close to my shirt, but that's all right. Yeah, all these murders, they, we came in in two thousand twenty-five. No talk about it on the news, but they showed smiling, ready for a street opening that really halfway ain't even done. Still ready, still got bumps and lumps, not even. So I wonder why none of those murders have happened, except three? Since two thousand twenty-five, open, um, came here? And, you know, it's funny how, you know, you talk about the tax dollars and the money that you're not getting. Ask the mayor, when he was the attorney for the City of Harvey and wasn't getting the money for those houses to be demoed. That's why we have these abandoned buildings. That's why we have these abandoned buildings. And when me and the others volunteered to do the houses and board us, we did it for about close to four hundred. We didn't get no money from y'all, we didn't ask for no money. But, you know, it's funny how it's just so hilarious about these things, and no, uh, money is being told what we got, whereas we're being allocated. But you saying about money and, uh, tax dollars that you not getting, but where's the money going? So do I get my time or not?
Thank you. Next, I need public comment is Tiara Greer, followed by, um, M. King Jr.
Hello, can you guys hear me? Hi, Tiara, um, I just received my property, well, me and my husband just bought our property a year ago in Harvey, and our taxes went up about eighty-hundred dollars. And we have about eight abandoned houses on our property. We got three in front of me, three in one of them, and eight in one of them. So I didn't know if you could ask any questions, this is my first time attending. I really want to know about the property taxes and why they're increasing so high like this, and we don't have any, like, improvement on our block. There's another one again, the house is, um, no, what is it, the lights? But outside of the tree, uh, tree lights, there's no tree lights at all, or our block, and either the other blocks. And all the other blocks is all just abandoned buildings. So, you know, I have a question, I just don't know why our property taxes so high like this, especially within the last year of the eighteen-hundred-dollar increase. So if there's anything that you guys are going to update our blocks or the trees, or, and everybody wants to appeal for our township, it's closed. So I can't even appeal the, um, the rate increases on the taxes. Is there anything else I can ask you about? I just, um, just, I just want to know just why we're here and what are we getting ourselves into? Especially if these property taxes are keeping one up, it's not going to be livable at the moment, because if we keep the increase, increase in our taxes, I don't even want to see that, like, one, one, one approach at this point. That's really all I can add so far, but can't ask any questions. But thank you, guys, and I probably won't surround this up too.
Next is Ms. King Jr.
Reverend Melvin King Jr., I'm ready to start a clock, and tours of all the stars, the most unfettered Friday thing I've ever seen in my life. You've got policemen here who are getting paid maybe not properly because they don't even know what your plans are probably are. They don't know what you're doing for them. That's why we changed policemen like people changing bullet laws. Here we go, teachers.
Come on.
For residents, right after you finish that goal, I call that goal a piece of garbage, a blacktop goal, the shit in the concrete, six million dollars, quid in the money, show them the light. The curbs are good, but the streets are bad. You got a sign sitting there over Dixie Highway, not Dixie Highway, look right around, Wood Street, and the signs is like trucks. Why no trucks? Because your goal is garbage. Because you know you got six million dollars and you probably didn't spend them two. Let me tell you, this is your one fifty-fourth street, less so, inferior. And it didn't finish like she said. The first ward alderman, I could not believe the first ward alderman, cut the ribbon for the third ward alderman. I stood out there in the cold with everybody else and watched other people cut. Everybody lined up, but, uh, but, uh, the second ward alderman, sorry, first, it said second ward alderman and the, and, uh, fourth ward alderman were not allowed to participate. What kind of markets reason that? Thousands of people voted for them, and thousands of people have a right to be represented. How can you do such a coward state and not allow them? That's another thing. You have a, you, you have a, uh, treasure right there. The treasure is not on, there's people, there's, there's paper. The treasure isn't elected official by constitution. State of Illinois says the treasure is supposed to be in everything, and that treasure is supposed to come to her before it comes to any control, anybody else assigned to do that job. So I'm telling you, citizens, you're getting cheated. You're not giving information. I'd say Dr. Irvin is giving you some better information. I encourage you, keep checking those things out. And at the very end, you let this non-constitutional violation of broad rules go on and say nothing. What is going on? Who has been for you as an attorney? The city or the citizens? Are you a mayor's lawyer? Are you a lawyer for the city of Harvey? I thought we were a city. I didn't know we were some kind of, some kind of a domain. We don't have to be, Mark. What we need is somebody protecting the police, fire, their rights, their union, everything else is getting paid properly, not using them for being the kind of people that are being used to be some kind of a tool for the mayor. I know they can't say anything, but I'm saying, I was a former chief. You're doing wrong. We're treating men of the law, missing their life, the city of Harvey, and got them sitting in here instead of on the streets and doing the job that they were trying to do. God bless you for this sorry work you're doing, amen.
Absolutely.
Next, I need you to, um, uh, the department reports. This year, we're going to try and do a few things differently, um, this is one of them. We ask for everyone to be patient because we may have some glitches as we work through this. But we want to make sure this year that we're trying to present as much as we possibly can to our residents, um, so that they know what is going on in our city. Um, God bless you. At this point in time, um, the department has to give a report. Um, we have not made room for any questions at this time. We are working out a system to figure out how to do so, or how to inform the, uh, the aldermen even more as far as what's going on. But things do take time, and we want to make sure we do it decently and importantly. So that being said, uh, we'll start with the first department report, which is by our city, where's, uh, city? Make sure you have the microphone. So please, uh, stand and give a report.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, we'll be discussing a lot of our two thousand twenty-four events. Um, we had a lot of achievements over the last year, the previous year, the years coming up to two thousand twenty-five. Um, one is being the one hundred fifty-fourth street renovation. One hundred fifty-fourth street renovation, um, that street has not been renovated in over a hundred years. We had a lot of, a lot of, uh, issues when pulling up that road. We found a lot of deterioration under the road that was not, we didn't know about prior to the road, uh, being renovated. Um, it did go over budget, the initial budget was four-point-two million. It was a grant. It's a reimbursable grant. So with reimbursable grants, you have to pay the money out, you have to show that the work was done, send in the invoices, send in the contracts, do quarterly reporting, and then the, um, the city does not receive a influx of funds. We don't receive four-point, uh, two million dollars all at one time. It's reimbursed, and it's after the contractors, the engineers, and everyone else is paid for the project. That was a huge project because it restored the infrastructure underneath the ground. We didn't just pave over another, uh, layer of pavement, uh, over and over and over again, like was done in the, we replaced all of the sewers, all the water pipes, so that can easily drain now, um, and move it forward. Another huge success was the Rogie Storm Repair. The Rogie Storm's repair was about a thirty-five-thousand-dollar repair. During the Gerco storm, when they flipped the poles into the ground, it hit a sore line, causing Rogie Avenue to flood over multiple years. It's not something that the city did or was done. It was deterioration, it was just a hole into the sewer. We did reach out to ComEd, which provided the funds to, to repair that storm right. So that was not a city project that I would avail, but we finally worked it to get that done. Hundred forty-seventh Street, uh, Metro Station, that was a huge renovation. That was another metro station, um, that has not, not been renovated, I want to say in forty, fifty years. They did come in, they did a renovation. We're also looking forward to the downtown renovations, which is a seventy-million-dollar project for Metro Station. Overall, we've applied for approximately fifty-eight million dollars in grants. We have been awarded approximately twenty-three million dollars in grants, approximately. Um, again, a lot of the grants, you can't utilize all the grants at one time. It's a series of recordings, you do a series of engineering studies prior to you actually utilize what the grant is for. There are various specific grants, so if one calls for roadway, you can only do roadway. If one calls for bike lanes, you can only do bike lanes. Um, it's not usually transferable, and again, a lot of these grants are reimbursable, meaning you have to pay out the money prior to receiving the money back. That would conclude our report for now.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davis. Next, we have the police department chief, Dings.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council members, and residents, I decided to share with you the achievements of our police department over the past year. Our commitment to ensuring the safety and security of our community has led to significant milestones and collaborations that have strengthened our operations and services. In two thousand twenty-four, the Harvey Police Department successfully secured substantial grants, enabling us to enhance our resources and capabilities. Among these accomplishments, for the first time in over twenty years, the Harvey Police Department was awarded the COTM Office Hiring Grant of over six hundred thousand dollars, which was, which facilitated the recruitment of civilian police officers who have already completed their training at the Chi- Chicago Metropolitan Police Academy. For the first, um, excuse me, we also obtained a twenty-thousand-dollar traffic speed safety grant from the Illinois Department of Transportation for further, further bolstering our traffic safety efforts. The Illinois Attorney General's Office approved the department for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five organized retail crime grant, allowing to run for around fifty thousand dollars, which has empowered us to effectively combat organized retail criminal activities within the city of Harvey. We collaborated with the Cook County Sheriff's Police Department for the South Suburban Safety Initiative, which was pivotal in enhancing our safety measures in high-crime areas within our community, significantly improving the safety in the city of Harvey. This mission, the mission of this initiative was, was to provide additional safety and security for the residents of these high-crime areas in the city. To this end, the high visibility patrols and saturation of the area were local agencies, the Cook County Sheriff's Police, and the Cook County Sheriff's Office personnel were utilized. We even conducted an outdoor roll call in the, uh, in the area of one hundred forty-seventh and Wood Street. We also established an intergovernmental, an intergovernmental agreement for the Treatment Response Team in partnership with the Cook County Sheriff's Office to address critical issues, specifically mental health emergencies on different calls for service. Treatment Response Team, which is known as TRT, was formed in June of two thousand nineteen to bridge the gap in services for those seeking treatment for overdoses and mental health crises. The TRT combines law enforcement resources with assistance from licensed clinical social workers to direct people to harm reduction and treatment services for those suffering from substance abuse and mental health disorders. As some of you also know, we also partnered with the Illinois State Police to critically review our policy and procedures. This has allowed us to identify and address areas of improvement while confirming effective practices and procedures that are already in place within the agency. These improvements were instrumental in enhancing our closure rate of various cases and improving the effectiveness and efficiency of our patrol and investigation division. Another accomplishment was the first time in over fifteen years the Harvey Police Department has been accepted into an intergovernmental agency task force, which is the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas Task Force, known as HITE. The HITE program was created by Congress with the Anti-Drug Abuse Act of nineteen eighty-eight, which provides assistance to federal, state, local, and tribal law enforcement agencies operating in areas determined to be critical drug trafficking regions of the United States. We were also awarded the COTM Office Department, uh, I'm sorry, the COTM Office in the Department of Justice approved us for technical assistance, uh, through Cry-TAC, which is the Collaborative Reform Initiative Technical Assistance Center, which focuses on effective identification, investigation, and prevention of violent crimes within the city. This multifaceted approach allowed us to build on successful crime reduction practices and methodologies through intelligence-led policing and strategies. In particular, the experts from the Technical Assistance Center came in, assembled to the Illinois State Police, and reviewed our current policies met with different stakeholders and helped us identify gaps and enhancements to strengthen our response to the investigation to violent crime incidents within the city of Harvey. A two-day onsite visit by subject matter experts provided invaluable insights into our crime analysis, helping us understand how to better engage with community members and to maintain public safety. Lastly, we, uh, we did launch Operation Street Sweep, utilizing our auxiliary police division, who revised our response to ordinance, ordinance violations within the city limits. Operation Street Sweep has been more stringent in citation and taking enforcement. This enforcement aims at behavioral correction. Through initiatives like Operation Street Sweep, we were successfully, we successfully streamlined our efforts to enhance the city's deforestation and promote compliance with local ordinances, thus creating a more aesthetically pleasing environment and foster a sense of community and pride and safety. These achievements would not have been possible without the city and the mayor's office, residents, and our local, state, and federal partnerships. We are grateful for the trust and collaboration that has propelled us towards creating a safer, more vibrant community in the city. We eagerly anticipate future collaborations and initiatives that will continue to help enhance the well-being of our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Dings. Next is our fire department.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Happy New Years. Uh, two thousand twenty-four, the fire, fire department was able to secure a thorough grant to purchase two generators for our station number two and our station number three. Uh, we never had, uh, generators for the locations, and when there was power, uh, it's kind of play our response. Also, uh, we, we have a new program, a fire shooting program, where we actually train employees to how to use a fire machine in a safe, controlled environment. We was able to, uh, train the food company, um, employees with this training. Uh, also, our department, fire department was able to do our yearly, uh, driver training, which we did at the KMS facility to, uh, keep up with the standard with the Illinois Department of Transportation and also IAS, ISO. Uh, we also hired, uh, five new candidates. Uh, last year, we, we had three members that retired and also two members went to Chicago Fire Department, so was able to, uh, hire, uh, five new candidates, um, they completed their fire cap in the last month, and they also just got one more course, and they'll be added to our shift, uh, for our shift levels. Uh, also, uh, back in two thousand twenty-three, I built a lot for a brand for a new fire engine. Um, before COVID-nineteen, the turnaround time for a new engine was five months. After COVID-nineteen, it took two to three years for a custom engine to be built. Uh, next month, we're supposed to go, uh, down to South Dakota for our final inspection, so we expect the delivery of the new fire engine at the end of February or sometime in March. And that pretty much ends the fire department report.
Thank you, Chief. Next is Public Works, followed by the, uh, Development.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council, awesome Harvey residents. Uh, it's a pleasure standing here before you today and sharing the progress we made over the last year with Public Works, Mike. As many of you know, two thousand twenty-four was a pivotal year for us. We worked to streamline operations, address lockdowns, any inter-office challenges, and alter and send new courses for the future. I'd like to take a few moments for us to look at the changes we made and highlight some of the key successes that we've seen. At the beginning of two thousand twenty-four, the decision was made to reorganize the department and more specialize the sub divisions, fleet, facility maintenance, property maintenance, and streets. This reconstruction was not just about creating separate divisions, it was about ensuring that each area of our department can operate more efficiently and effectively, not only for our benefit, for the eternal team, but more importantly, for the residents that we serve. Our first change, excuse me, was to create a complete supervisor position. By filming this wall, we were able to bring a new focus on managing By filming this wall, we were able to bring a new focus on managing the city's, the city's needs of vehicles. This has had an immediate impact. Through the use of public surplus auction sites, we successfully auctioned off public service vehicles, generating over thirty thousand dollars in revenue for the city. Additionally, thirty-eight overall efficient fleet divisions negotiated the purchase of four new tow cars for the Harvey Police Department as we facilitated the sale of C vehicles, all which contributed to our revenue effects. Next, we expanded our team with the addition of belt pilot compliance officers. Their efforts have been invaluable in addressing residents' complaints, particularly when it comes to illegal dumping, through their hard work, we've seen a significant decrease in response time, allowing us to serve better and to serve our community better. We also re-inspired in our facility maintenance. Facility maintenance supervisor was instrumental in securing thirty-two abandoned properties throughout the city, working alongside the property maintenance supervisor, able to clean up these properties, removing debris, overgrowth, that has been a concern for both safety and aesthetics. Additionally, we updated this inventory of city-owned properties and implemented citywide maintenance schedule, ensuring that critical repairs and compliance proportion be the regulations for us. Looking at our water division, while it's still undergoing some internal changes, we are proud of the progress that we've made. Our off-site maintenance crews were able to repair fifty-eight main brakes in-house, saving the city over one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in repair costs. In addition, we installed two hundred and fifty smart meters, which have approved water rolling embers and allowed for better leak detection. We also replaced five pump, air pumping stations and made significant progress in adjusting nine of the ten U.S.E.Q. violations that have been outstayed. These are just a few highlights from an incredible productive year. The changes made into two thousand twenty-four from reorganizing departments into specialized subdivision in key positions have been crucial in helping us serve the city and its residents. This still has much work to be done, but we're moving in the right direction. I want to, I want to extend my gratitude to all my team members who have worked hard to stay to make these improvements a reality, your dedication, and hard work that are not unnoticed, and I am confident that the continued focus of you will be building on this one.
Thank you. Director Seven, next is, uh, Economic Development, followed by the Financial Department.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor, council members, and residents. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here to serve as the Economic Development Director. And I think the first thing I wanted to say is, economic development is a team sport. You all got to get into it and get involved, and it does take a lot of people to do it. So, what are some of the goals? And I want to share with you four key goals. One is to grow jobs and investment. We want to bring here jobs and investments to grow our city. We want to build quality life, make it look better, be better for people, promote the city, and also, um, partner with stakeholders where we can, and you've heard, but you've heard a lot of that today. So, my key functions and what I do is business development, so I'll be working with businesses to make sure they come here, they start, they grow, is one thing that we do. Another thing that I get involved with a lot too is planning and zoning. Uh, before someone can really build, you gotta check the code and make sure that it's, uh, permitted uses to, to make that, uh, to build that, uh, that business and, uh, make that investment. And also, I think one really key that occurred a lot today is the sale of city properties, a major, major function as well that, that economic development is involved with. So, let me come, uh, cover a few things on the area of business development that's really key that's happened in this year. I think one thing you'll see is, uh, AutoLad is something that the Council has approved, uh, and, uh, that project is right now, uh, pending, pending financing. Another project is New Era Candace Dispensary at one six nine five zero. Uh, that project right now is due diligence phase. Uh, a third project is J and T Group, and, uh, basically that was the initiation of a comprehensive housing development program that includes a variety of things, and I think you'll all be excited to hear, is number one, it'll, it'll all, it'll deal with rehabbing existing property that people have mentioned here that are, are, uh, they're dilapidated or maybe demolished, but they can be resurrected and rehabbed. Number two, uh, they're going to be able to demolish some of the buildings that are targeted. And three, uh, new construction as well, new single-family homes will be built over time. And, uh, with this partnership that we created, the Council approved it December twelfth with the J and T Group, uh, I think we'll have very exciting things. So, the first thing that's going to happen is a workshop, uh, there's a flyer out there. On February eighth, there is a homeownership workshop, and I'll, please tell everyone about it, because if you want to encourage that here in the City of Harvey, again, building quality of life, you do so, uh, by increasing homeownership is certainly one way. Uh, so another function is planning and zoning. I just wanted to mention that we work with Planning and Zoning Commission, a five hundred commission board. We were involved with such projects as Metro, the rezoning of Metro, and, uh, Molsted, uh, uh, New Era also, the special use permit for that Candace operation. And another thing too that was, uh, DeLopez Tire Shop. And what we try to do with special use permits is try to build quality of the project and make sure that we negotiate the best kind of development that we can have in our city. And we do that by negotiating strong special use permits. And so, excited to be, uh, that, working with the city to group, again, to improve the quality of the businesses that we have here. With regard to property sales, uh, it's very challenging to know how much property the city does have, and we have over about fourteen thousand five hundred different pins, unique identifying properties, and I have a city over about four hundred and fifty. And from that, we already, uh, ob- obligated and dedicated committed fifty-five of those properties for, for sale. And our goal is to keep track of that and keep moving that number up, and we keep updating those sales available and put them in private hands, and that'll be very exciting to see. So, I'm looking forward to growing and working with the team, uh, in economic development as a team short within two years. So, thank you very much for serving as your economic development director.
Thank you. Next is Finance Department, followed by Building Department.
Good evening, council members, Mayor, council members. Uh, we, uh, issued a management report today for a period ending November thirtieth. They will be posted to the website tomorrow. It shows basically the city continues to struggle financially, but the things that are true, we are able to do types of capital improvements and things like that, the grants that the, uh, lit department, uh, receives or, or payroll, certainly has the city grant to receive from, for the fire engine office, reduces our cost, helps reduce our ongoing, uh, cost of repair of those vehicles. But just, again, I will be posted to the website. With Finance Department focused on the next hundred days, uh, our accounting software is going to be changed to a cloud-based system, but included with adding the building department, welding department, fire department, also those, the goal of having a better integrated way of doing what's going on with these departments, whether vendors are being paid, whether the people who are the city are being paid, so as we issue licenses and things like that, they'll be able to cross-check that without calling, uh, the Finance Department. The audit for fiscal year twenty-two will be starting this week, with Nintendo completing twenty-two, and twenty-three, and twenty-four, all in succession. Uh, also, at the end of the month, we will retire another set of bonds, two oh two, two oh two C series bonds, which were about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which gave the city with only one seven bond outstanding, and that was the refund asset of the, uh, two oh seven bonds with two, two twenty twenty-three series A and B. Also, in the next couple of months, we'll begin planning, uh, for our budget for fiscal year twenty-six, you know, fiscal year twenty-five begins, uh, on April thirtieth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Building Department, followed by Communications Department.
Good evening, Arnold, Mayor, Clark, the state colleagues, uh, our fellow people, our fellow workers, we have great residents of the City of Harvey. My name is Ryan Hirst, and I am the Director of the Building and Special Department. In two thousand twenty-four, our department was successful in creating a pastor and mayor quarterly meeting that allowed the spiritual leaders of our community to engage, discuss, and plan both current and future ways that the spiritual community can partner and assist the forward progress of this municipality. Our department has seen an increase in making property registration from the months of June into October twenty, twenty twenty-four, uh, fifty-seven hundred dollars has been collected in fees. Our department is also starting, our department also started with working with fire insurance providers, insurance providers for a tax and demo process that allows the city to recruit all violation of fees associated with abandoned and fire-stricken properties, very important. In December the second of two thousand twenty-four, our department closed to the public for a much-needed service upgrades, but we will reopen on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, and I am pleased to announce that during this closure, we've purged and digitized records, strategized, and streamlined processes for residents and business owners convenience. Additionally, new to our website is our online registration. The online registration, uh, is for contractors, online license application, processes for property owners, renting single and multifamily structures. Additionally, starting first of the year twenty twenty-five, business license and operational cer- cert- certificates for license of worship can be applied for and receive electronically, and so to follow, will be permanent applications as well as continuing work in progress. Thank you, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we have the Communications Department, followed by the Water Department.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alexia Hall, and I'm Communications Director of the City of Harvey. Over the past year, our department has been focused on updating and revitalizing our communication strategy to better serve you, the residents of Harvey. As part of this initiative, we made significant updates across various platforms. First, our city website has been redesigned to make it more user-friendly and to provide easier access to important information. If you haven't visited it already, then I encourage you to check it out at cityofharveyil.org. Our monthly newsletter, the Harvey Pulse, has also been revamped. It is mailed directly to residents, but we do encourage you to sign up for the electronic version on our website. You'll also find the newsletter on the website, and for those who prefer a more visual format, we created a video version. You can find these videos on our Facebook page and our YouTube channel. Speaking of Facebook, you may have noticed our new banner. We are also making improvements to our YouTube page to better showcase local events and initiatives. Our ultimate goal is to also provide our community and encourage you to participate in local events and initiatives to ensure that you are always in the loop. We will be enhancing our email communications this year by sending regular updates directly to your inbox. We will make it easier for you to stay informed about everything that's going on in Harvey. Tonight, we are excited to share the video version of the Harvey Pulse with you. It's just one example of how we are working to deliver timely and relevant information in order that it's convenient for all. So, I thank you for your time, and as always, we encourage you to visit cityofharveyil.org to stay connected, and if you can't, just take a moment.
I want to see a person. These can happen in the City of Harvey. We don't learn from experience, we learn from reflecting on experience. This quote from John Dewey reminds us why it's so important to take a moment to look back before we move forward. As we close out another incredible year in Harvey, let's reflect on everything we've accomplished together. This year, we faced challenges head-on, improved services for our residents, and strengthened our city through teamwork and resilience. But taking time to reflect isn't about dwelling on the past, it's about using our experience as stepping stones toward a stronger future. So, as we head into two thousand twenty-five, we encourage you to take a moment for your own reflection, celebrate your wins, and learn from the tough moments. Together, we'll make the new year one of progress and possibility. I'll just go into some of the highlights from this month's Harvey Pulse. Back in two thousand twenty, a violent storm brought hurricane-like winds and knocked out power across the city. The repairs included installing new, stronger power poles, but during the next major storm, the Public Works Department discovered that one of the poles damaged a storm pipe on Roe Avenue. This caused flooding near the Trillington West Apartments and Fire Station Number Three. Fast forward to today, after securing forty-five thousand dollars in funding from ComEd, repairs are complete, and Roe Avenue is flood-free. Great, so a game changer for communities like Harvey. These funds allow us to take on important projects like restructuring under fifty-four Street, installing new water meters, and replacing firewires. But did you know there are different types of grants? One type, reimbursable grants, requires cities to spend money upfront and then get reimbursed after submitting proof of exclusives. While this can be tricky for cities with tight budgets, careful planning helps us access these critical funds. Stay tuned for updates on new projects made possible by human resources. The holiday season is here, and we want everyone in Harvey to stay safe. When shopping, avoid carrying large amounts of cash, and try to park in well-let areas. If you're shopping alone, let someone let you plant, and for online shopping, be cautious of third-party sellers. The drive this time of year could be tricky with snowy roads. Plan ahead and keep an emergency kit in your car with a scented bucket, blanket, and flashlight. And don't forget to check on loved ones who might need a little extra care this holiday season. Want to learn life-saving skills? Sign up for our monthly CPR training classes, can be prepared to respond in an emergency. Visit our website for more information. And a big congratulations to our newest Fire Academy graduates, Jordan Fisher, Preston Jackson, Mark Porstini, and Sharona Sheldon. Thank you for answering the call to serve our community. Our Public Works Department is ready for winter, our dump trucks have been converted to snowplows, and we have eighteen hundred tons of salt, ready to be dispersed on slick and snowy roads. They've also been working with the state to ensure that they are up to date on various weather advisories and how they can impact the community and driving conditions. This year, the city showed them a big way for the community. Our Benson's Day Luncheon, which was hosted by the Parks Office, was a success, as was our annual turkey giveaway. We distributed over six hundred turkeys to residents, just one in many ways, and we're committed to supporting our community. And we hope you were able to join us for the annual toy giveaway and tree lighting ceremony. It was a perfect way to kick off the holiday season with joy and togetherness. Well, let's look for this edition of the Harvey Pulse. Stay engaged, stay inspired, and let's keep moving forward in Harvey. Enjoy your holidays and see you next year. Welcome to the, this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Water Department, followed by Human Resources.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leah, I'm the Water Department Manager. In the past year, our department has reviewed ninety-nine percent of our R five documents and successfully scanned required records for other R five documents. This process has allowed us to remove years of accumulated paperwork and overall enhance the appearance of our department. We have also updated, um, our credit card processing machines that now you can tap first line, we have back choice, and also accept app payments. Coming soon, we look forward to rolling out the process for replacing old and hidden water meters with smart meters. These smart meters are the latest in technology. They will measure and track water usage in real time and, as well as detect water. This, among other benefits, will provide a more accurate monthly billing and ultimately help the city service residents more efficiently. Moving onward, we will continue with efforts that includes the quality of service we provide to our residents. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we have the Water Department, followed by Human Resources.
Good evening. I'm the Director of the Human Resource Department. On behalf of the Human Resource Department, we encourage all of you to view our website, where we post all of our current openings within our municipality. Daily, we work hard to recruit and hire top talent to maintain the full staff. On a quarterly basis, we're implementing management training, whereas the special harassment training has been completed. The Human Resource Department within the last year has updated the city's Harvey handbook and updated the time and attendance policy. These updates have enabled us to enhance our focus on day-to-day activities. Lastly, the Human Resource Department Lastly, the human resource department encourages citizens to please feel free to reach out to us with any employment inquiries or any feedback. This concludes my report.
Finally, we have senior services.
Good evening everybody, I'm Mr. Mayor, the left service, you know, coworkers, citizens in Harvey, Illinois. My name is Joseph Wetchen Junior, the director of senior services. We work closely with different Harvey government housing agencies to stay informed and to help improve the quality of life for our residents living in these facilities. By planning and hosting monthly activities, like bingo for lunch, for luncheon, activities swag for gathering meetings, seniors with attitude, line dancing once a week, twice a week, to help you deal with your cardio, exercise, and physical ailments, holiday celebrations, and community outreach ministries. We make personal calls, wellness calls, to check on our seniors to make sure that they are aware of the related activities and the information that we have in the city of Harvey. For example, we have workshops, information networking, current events, activities, health and wellness issues, community events, and community activities. We, we, we activated our less taught Harvey communication network program for our residents living in Harvey, Illinois. This program shares the historical information and the stories about our community, and it challenges us to develop. Here are three examples of some people that came out. We had state representative, we had Davis, we had Congresswoman Robyn Kelly, we had Mayor Clark, and myself. We focused on Harvey's future, Harvey's past, Harvey's accomplishments, and Harvey's challenges. We also participated in the mentorship program for four seater youth workers during the summer months to provide a job training in this area. We noticed that our children need to understand how to be employed and used courtesy, be polite, be respectful, especially when you're talking to seniors. We engage them in conversations and how to dress and how to act when we're talking to the residents when they're coming to senior services. Customer service is one of the things that we do, uh we train our kids to do. That concludes my report. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. Next is Mayor, I'm in. There's so much to say, um, probably everything that we, that has been accomplished over the past five years and those things that specifically have been accomplished over the past year. That it would probably take a significant amount of time, so I will belabor you with that. However, I will point out a few things um that I would like for the residents to consider as we continue to grow and evolve here in the forward in the city. First, most of what I think the department hands for their presentations, um, I'm looking forward to and very excited to see what they will bring for us uh in the, in the near future. So I'm really excited about that and grateful that they're doing this work. Um, it's not necessarily an easy job, and one of the reasons why it's not is because most of this work that you've heard from our department hands is work that should have actually probably been done decades ago. But it was not done, so now we have a group of people who are not only trying to do the work that they need to do for today's time, they're also doing work that should have been done decades ago. For example, one hundred and fifty-four Street, which is something that was over a hundred years old and had not had the necessary construction done to it. It's one of the reasons why it's a little bit more time and also why it costs a little more money to do. But we are grateful that, and I am grateful specifically, that we have a team of people who are dedicated toward moving the city forward uh and progressing. Also, I want to thank the council for their role in December to not increase taxes for the twenty twenty-five uh tax year. Regardless of what's being said or whatever conjecture is being made, we have not increased taxes. Um, and I also encourage other municipalities, excuse me, other taxing districts within the Harvey area not to increase their taxes as well. Whether they chose to do so or not is up to them, but the city of Harvey did not increase taxes for the twenty twenty-five year as we promised. But that goes to say that just because people make up facts or try to express their opinions does not necessarily make it true. One of the things that I've found in this area, in this era of social media, it seems like you can say whatever it is that you want to say and you can get away with it, whether it is or is not true. You can make accusations with no facts at all and no evidence to back it up. But still, you can put it out there with very little consequence. And I said very little consequence, because free speech is that thing that everyone has. Everyone in the United States of America should have. But it doesn't give you the right to speak without consequence. Just because you have the right to say things does not necessarily mean that there won't be consequences for the things that you have said or the things that you have done. Reimbursable grants are an issue with our city, primarily because we are still collecting approximately fifty-two percent of our property taxes. And as a result, we are only working with half of what we should have coming in from a property tax standpoint. So when we have a project that requires being reimbursed, we have to pay that money upfront, which means that the city has to come up with that money in order to make that project happen. If we're not able to come up with that money, then we're not able to participate in grant. In addition, thirty-five percent of all grants have been seized or are being seized by the Illinois State Comptroller. Because once again, I'm going to go back, I said that many of these things are things that should have been done or accomplished decades ago. Well, because the prior administration failed to pay the the pensions properly over decades and um all women, Joyce can attest to this, former government, uh Joe Williamson can attest to this, as well as our comptroller, Mr. Louis Williams can attest to this. Because those pension obligations were not paid, now the Illinois State Comptroller takes thirty-five percent of our grants. That means that if we get a grant for, say, for instance, a million dollars, then the Illinois State Comptroller is going to take three hundred and fifty thousand dollars off the top. Can I have a rap there, Mr. Williams and Ms. Davis? So they're going to take that money off the top, which shortens the ability for the city of Harvey to do the work that it needs to do. Because now instead of us having a cool one billion dollars, we only have six hundred and fifty. But at the same time, we still have to come up with that three hundred and fifty thousand and cover the reimbursement parts for our projects. So we want to continue to improve and we want to continue to get even more revenue here at the city, but one of the things that we promise is that we're not going to do it by the increase in property taxes. So we're not going to put that burden on our residents going forward. Um, I believe and I still hold that our residents have paid enough. Uh, our residents have actually been supplementing the city for decades. And so now we're trying to reverse the clock. We will take time, but we are making efforts to do so. Whereas once again, people can make whatever um allegations they want to make, but the bottom line is, this city is doing a great job. And if there is anything that is illegal, I'll be the first to say I welcome the Cook County State's attorney because we have been doing. The Illinois Attorney General, I welcome the FBI. I welcome anyone in the federal government to come through and to investigate the city and find something that we are doing incorrectly. If that is the case, then one, we'll make the corrections, two is, I've said before, I'm not putting my law license up so that you can have a bunch of foolishness going on in the city of Harvey. That's how I make, that's how I make my bread and butter, is by having that law license. And so I'm not going to put that up and jeopardize it for foolishness and nonsense. So if there isn't anything that anyone has that can show that we are doing something that is in violation of the law, I really would appreciate those naysayers to stop the foolishness so that we can move forward and move our city forward in a very positive direction. Finally, um, I'm going to thank the ladies from the coffee bar. Uh, if you don't know, the city of Harvey has a coffee bar and we it is really there to say thank you to all of the residents for everything that you do and for dealing with us. So uh, those ladies from the coffee bar volunteer their service, seniors who do that. So we hope and pray that they will continue to do so this year, and we ask you to come on. Have a cup of coffee and talk to, to uh each other here in the city. Finally, I'd like to thank our partners, Senator Dick Durden, Senator Tanny Duckworth, Congresswoman Robert Kelly, uh State Representative William Davis, uh Cook County Board President, excuse me, Tony Breckin, uh Cook County Commissioner, uh Bob DeGord. Having a, a team of people outside of the city helps to lift the city up. Um, and they continually do the work. Uh, I forgot about uh MWA, MWA Harvey President Kerry Seale. Uh, and there's probably so many more others, and it is all of the people who actually come here to do the work on behalf of those entities. This past week, and I'll go over probably my next report, we had a, our, our first quarter meeting. Um, and we started talking about all the things that we've done in the past and all the great things that we're going to do in the future. So the city of Harvey is moving. I'm proud, proud of everything they were doing, but most of them are proud of its people, their tenacity, I'm proud of the council and the work that they do, and I'm proud of the staff and how much they give of themselves to make this city better. So that ends my report, and I thank you. And on, and on that note, do you want to continue the motion to adjourn? We have a motion by the second, second by the third. All favors to the father saying hi. No supposes, hearing good. Stand adjourned, it's eight forty P M. Thank you.
Okay. Wow, that was unconventional. Oh, you got to head out?
No, I want to go in your bathroom.
Oh, yeah, really? Okay, folks, so that was the city council meeting. That was not a normal city council meeting. Uh, for some reason, we have not had departmental reports in about, well, about six years, about since Clark's been in office. Kellogg used to have them actually regularly for all the problems uh that he was accused of, um, you know, for all the trouble he did really cause. He did actually allow departmental reports, so uh that was interesting. We saw something we don't normally see. Uh, Glynnis um had a very memorable sweatshirt on tonight showing off her, her um persistence that she is um not going to be silenced, you know, by that five hundred dollar fine. So that was good to see. Um, I don't know if you guys could see it before, but Chappelle, oops, not my face. Chappelle has an Everybody Hates Chris shirt, uh sweatshirt on. Let's see if you can see it. So that might be one reason why the mayor gave her a hard time. Uh, but yeah, so that was a little unconventional meeting tonight. And not too many people showed, I'm, I'm guessing just because the weather was so, is so cold tonight. And I, oh, I didn't show you guys, well, you guys didn't see because I was filming, but I have my new Harvey Storkus Society shirt on. Let's see, who stays till the end? Who's still watching with me? Uh, oh, just Carlita and Diane. Hey, ladies. As usual, they're, they're trying to boot us out. Goodbye. So I am going to I'm going to get my stuff so that they don't, someone doesn't try to come after me. You never know, you never know, you're going to be so careful. Okay, so now I'm headed out. Now I'm headed out. Bye, ladies. Let's see, did I get everything? Yes, I did not forget anything there. That's good.
Did anybody buy a ticket for me? A metal ticket for me? Okay, I need one, two, three, four, five. I don't need enough for me, but I'll get you the next week. All right?
Great job, guys. As always.
All right, thank you.
Oh, yeah, this was from, um, this was from Glynnis, actually, because uh she made, yeah, yeah. Since we can't say anything.
We can push, we can go this way, we can move toward the.
Did you get one?
And what is that? What do you use that for?
Uh, so that's
We can't clap, so it's our thumbs up and thumbs down.
Yeah, yeah, so that was, that was, uh,
And we can't boo or cheer or
Right, right.
But we can do that.
Mm-hmm. Wow, so awesome. And we didn't have as many police here tonight, but still very not as many police, I was just documenting, but still a fair number of police. Uh-huh. Maybe about ten maybe tonight instead of the usual like quittiness? Thank you, goodnight. Right, yeah, still a lot considering, you know, um, considering, you know, we're told that at night we only have two or three cops on duty.
Yeah, that's
For the whole city, did you know that?
Thank you for your time tonight. I would have been called.
Stay warm, it is so freaking cold. Okay, so Tyron's out. So, yep, I don't know. Well, I think it's just mostly staff left, a lot of police. Yep. Do you want me to walk with you, Glynnis? Where are you parked? You're, I think you're right next to me. Yes, yeah. You're right. I think, I think Clark cut your time because he saw that sweatshirt.
Yeah, cuz he was looking at my, he was looking at my shirt when he first, when he first walked up, he was looking at my shirt. I saw him.
Yes, no, definitely.
I was like, oh, okay.
Oh, wait, this, I don't know if I've seen these plates before. What's this?
That's, them the police plates.
Oh, that's not Clark's? I thought that was Clark's. Oh, no, you're right. I'm sorry, you're right. He has the mayor one, yeah. Yeah, Glynnis, this is you, right? You're right by me?
Uh, yeah.
Is that Colby? I know you have to watch the I know, so you don't get hit.
But I believe, but I believe somebody had told him about my shirt, so when he first walked in. Yeah, he was That's what it was. Somebody told him about my shirt when he first walked in. Cuz when he walked in, he looked at my shirt and like rolled his ass and I just laughed.
Is Colby going anywhere, doing anything? You too. Thank you. Yes. Keep
Oh, we gonna keep on?
Absolutely. So we just had to make sure that everybody got out, okay? I think everybody did. You never know when people getting harassed here. Right, yeah, absolutely, yep. Until we get the receipts.
Right, until we get the receipts.
They can say whatever they want. We don't know if it's true or not. Yes. Okay. Colby just said we're all, you know, gonna make sure everyone got home, okay?
Oh, okay.
So, alright. Alright. You too. Okay, guys, so. Who do I have? I got one person left with me. Who's left? Is it Diane? Diane. Hey, Diane. Hey, Diane. Good night, Diane. I'm sure y'all getting ready to go to bed, but yeah, I hope you enjoyed the live. I don't usually do a live, but I guess it does make it easier in that everybody can see, uh, everything right away, but um, unfortunately, as Colby was saying and as Chappelle was saying, all those numbers that we heard really don't mean anything because, um, because, oops, sorry. I'm just trying to fix this. They don't mean anything because until we see the receipts, they can say whatever they want, you know what I mean? But it doesn't, it really doesn't mean anything, so. I'll never even use this thing. Wait. Ah! Okay. So anyway, I'm guessing everybody was kinda, uh, tired tonight with all this cold weather. They wanted to stay in, huh? I don't blame you. Look at that. Still got three, four police officers. So many police, more police at these meetings, like I said, than we have at our, um, than we have at our, uh, working the night shift in Harvey. We only have, we were told by an officer that left because he was getting, he was a good officer and he was getting harassed by, by officers that were corrupt. Um, but we were told that, um, there's only two or three on duty. Oh, look at this. Isn't this so sad? Look. This is where Clark had the historic buildings demolished that we had, we had investor who wanted to pick some up. Now it's just all empty. I think this is where Clark, uh, wants to put his, his new, um, municipal center or something. I don't know, but it looks so horrible, empty, uh, barren. There's one left. I hope we could save that building. I hope so. There's the Harvey Lofts. Uh, which the building looks nice. It's just, um, I don't think that necessarily was a, a, a bad project altogether. I would have liked to have seen retail on the first floor. And my other critique, there were some cop lights over there too. I don't know what's going on over there, but my other critique of this development was, well, I had asked them to, I'm like, why can't it face Hundred and Fifty Fourth Street? They didn't listen to that cuz it looks so ugly with the side on Hundred and Fifty Fourth. But, um, you know, just to, to, there just was no community feedback, just like uh, Mayor Clark and the Alder Yesman have done everything else. They don't take any feedback on anything. Um, I know of at least one investor that wanted to, to put something in that beautiful corner building right there and um, the mayor has made it very hard on him. This building is city owned. They don't do anything with that. This is city owned. They don't do anything with the old city hall. Um, we've offered our help with the Harvey Historical Society, but we never, we never get anything. Oh, and this, look at, this is already a police facility that they don't use. And now the old menuette diner and these, these, these really cool storefronts, Clark wants to make that a, a police building too. Same thing, we could do something with these old buildings and Jean's Bakery, but no, 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 no. Clark is holding up every, he's holding everything hostage. Holding up every, every possible, uh, you know, positive development hostage, which is really sad. Oh, well, except for the marijuana dispensary. Don't forget that. But that was something that no one asked for and it was just voted on one meeting and it's like crazy. Like there's already somebody who had a business there. They had a tire business and Clark just decided to kick him out so that, um, to kick them out. Oh, there's Seda. Oh, yeah, we found out that, uh, Clark and, and his buddies, they wanted to click, kick Seda out too. That's the block where he kicked out, uh, at least four or five families, long, long time families from their houses cuz he wants to build a park. They, Clark was trying to kick Seda out of this building. I mean, it's crazy. It's crazy. The city already owns so many prop, they own hundreds. Tonight, the one good thing, um, is that at least they admitted publicly that the city owns at least four hundred and fifty parcels cuz couldn't get them to admit that forever. But look, look at, look, this street, Hundred and Fifty Fourth, it's not even done. This is the one they had the ribbon cutting for. Isn't this crazy? It's absolute craziness. It's craziness, y'all. Ryan, oh, hey, Rogan from, uh, Robbins, I believe, right? How's Robbins doing? How's your mayor? I get the sense that your mayor is more, uh, he listens to the people more in Robbins. I mean, but I don't know. I've never been to one of your meetings. I know Colby attended one though and she said, she said she thought that you guys had a lot more civic engagement there. She was, she was, uh, impressed. Particularly as it relates to the, um, you know, the MWRD project. You know what's crazy is that you guys in Robbins are getting this huge new park, like in retention pond project thing? And no one's being no one is being displaced, but here in Harvey, uh, the mayor is pushing his park that no one wants and this retention pond, no one wants it. If he really, really has to do it, he could put it somewhere else. It wouldn't displace anybody. And he's already kicked out, um, forced from their homes several elderly black, um, uh, families that they've lived here for decades. They were like the first black families to live on these blocks in Harvey. And Mayor Clark and the MWRD and Kerry Steele forced them out of their homes. I mean, it, it's, it's just it, it's infuriating and it's heartbreaking. And the crazy thing is the whole time that they say that they're pro-black and they, you know, they love helping minorities and everything. And obviously it's a lie because if you like helping minorities, why would you force them out of their home that they've lived in for decades? When we have empty land all over Harvey. So they're up to some crazy stuff. Um, real estate fraud and who knows what else, you know? Um, yeah, sorry if it's kinda slow for a second. I'm just getting home. But yeah, um, oh, Ariel is, is tuned in too. Hola, Ariel. So Ryan Buckley, how are things going in Robbins? When did they, I wonder when they start, when do they start the project at your pla, at your, um, the MWRD project there? I hope you all enjoyed my commentary tonight. I was typing. I, um, even if you found it annoying, I, you know, I just wanted to do it so that I had on record that I was responding to all the lies that they were saying cuz they said a lot tonight, but pretty much everything about, um, money is we can't verify because they don't show the receipts. So I mean, you know, they love to say lots of stuff about grants and everything and we but you can't verify it. You gotta have receipt. Oh, hey, Ryan. I just saw your, your comment. Yeah, so, oh, they started it already. Oh, okay. Oh, okay, okay, okay. Yeah, like I said, I just can't, um, can you believe that, um, they're doing that huge, huge project in Robbins? No one's being displaced. And then this little, this, this thing here, which is much smaller, they're like, we have videos of these widows. They're crying because they didn't think they had a choice. They're scared. The government comes and says, here, we're gonna do this project. They didn't think they could fight it. So like the one, she literally, she had, she was, she was good. She's, she's retired, um, uh, living in her house and, uh, now she's living with her son. Because even the money that she got from MWRD wasn't enough to buy her another house. Not compared to the house she had in Harvey. Oh, he may be the next supervisor. Oh, Clark, yeah, I hope not. I hope not. Don't forget, people, if you didn't buy your city sticker already, I bought mine. I just have to put it on, but buy your city sticker because you know Clark will, uh, be very, very happy to fine you another ridiculous fine if you don't buy your city sticker. Ryan, do you guys have, do you guys require, uh, you have, do you have to get, uh, stickers for your car in Robbins? I'm guessing probably yes. Ooh, oh my God, you guys, it is so cold. It's supposed to be a high of like seventeen tomorrow too, so stay warm, please. Thank you again for tuning in. Oh, yes, you do. Yeah, how much are the Robbins stickers? I'm curious. I think ours are thirty-five now for most people. I'll just say it's thirty-five. But, uh, yeah, thanks for tuning in. I'm glad I was able to do a live so that I don't have to remember to post it later. I just wanna share. I'll share it in a few of the groups and, um, we will just keep on keeping on. Good night, Diane. Alright, talk to you guys soon. Bye.